Being a couple weeks away and...
Yes.
Chaos.
So much goes into it, more than just the...
Calling the meeting to order, let's please stand for the pledge.
Thirty minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, can you please take the role?
Ms. Cherry.
Present.
Dr. Connors.
Present.
Ms. Cardino.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Lane.
Here.
Ms. Rashid. Ms. Elgara Cohen. Ms. Scottow.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Hereby it be known that the Piscataway Township Board of Education has complied with the notification requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act for the announcement of this meeting, date and place on April the 30th, 2023 in the following manner: posting of the public notice on the posting board for the Board of Education in the Administration Building, email notification to the newspapers serving Piscataway, The Home News Tribune and The Courier-News, email notification filed with the municipal clerk at the Municipal Building on Host Lane. This meeting is being videotaped. This recording is not an official record or supplement to the minutes and is intended only as a source of information that the public might utilize at a later date to familiarize themselves with the board activities. Executive session, being resolved that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of review and discussion of the personnel agenda, litigation, HIB monthly reports and other matters pursuant to law NJ SA ten semicolon four dash B, may I have a motion, please?
motion.
Can I have a second?
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.
Office ready for us.
Office ready for us.
Be it resolved, the board reconvenes the public session.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're back in public session. There is no student presentation tonight. There are no student representative reports tonight. Guess I'm up first, president's report. Don't mind me. I hope that all our families and staff have been taking the time to enjoy their summer and recharging their batteries as we prepare for an exciting 2023-2024 school year. The Piscataway Summer Camp will be wrapping up another successful summer program next week. Our children in grades pre-K through eight have had great fun that included art, cooking, and pool time, plus wonderful trips to Liberty Science Center, Duane Park, Turtleback Zoo, Sandy Hook, Tomahawk Lake, and more. This week featured the Camp Family Barbecue and Talent Show. We are thrilled that the Community Education Office is able to offer this great experience to all of our students each year. As we draw closer to the start of another school year, our athletes are hitting the fields for their first practices in anticipation of successful fall sports season. The Piscataway High School football team began training camp this week, and their first game is just around the corner on August the 25th, home against Long Branch. The Chiefs hope to build on last season's successful year with another march into the playoffs. Middle school football begins practice next week. Most of the rest of our Piscataway High School sports teams, as well as the Super Chiefs marching band, will begin camp on August the 21st, and middle school sports will get on their way on August the 28th. Best of luck to all of our coaches and students as they work hard to get ready for this fall. And that's the end of my president's report. Next, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. So also, getting through the summer really quickly, it's already August 10th. I hope everybody is enjoying themselves and getting some rest, recharging for the school year. Families should start to look for emails from the district. I'll send a letter out from the district with some information first from the superintendent's office, probably the end of next week, and then the following week, the week of the 21st, letters will come and information will come through email from individual schools. Staff will begin on Tuesday, September 5th, with a convocation at the High School Performing Arts Center, and then our students will have their first day on Wednesday, September 6th. A lot of work has been completed from curriculum to curriculum development to all the way to facilities improvements, and I want to thank everyone on the staff who worked at all in the summer in any capacity. Really important that we acknowledge the people who make our place great, so I want to thank not only the central office who've been working their tails off in every aspect, but all of the teachers with the curriculum grounds and maintenance and things like that, and you all as well for the work that you do on the board. So I'd like to turn the floor over now as part of my report to Dr. Baskerville for two short presentations on some testing that we went through at the end of last year.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see all of you again. Normally, we have a student achievement report that has to be done by the 31st of October. So normally, I stand before you once a year with this, but this year, the state said that we had to break it out and do the New Jersey graduate proficiency assessment by the 31st of August. Now, the reason for that is the implications that that would have on the upcoming year, and we'll have to bring access testing out as well. I want to start with the access performance data, which is the goal sheet that you have. The D O E have legal requirements for us actually screening and monitoring our adult population. We have a screening process to determine who needs services in our district. It starts with the home language survey, so when you register about this in the home language survey, you see that language is spoken at home. That's one of the ways that we first identify those who are in need of service. We put you in two buckets, kind of start there. If you may be yes or maybe, so if it's a yes or maybe, if you are maybe, then we can do a deeper dive into a records check to see what district you come from, what services you had in previous places. So after we decide whether the person needs or does not need service, there's an annual monitor, which takes place through academics and with of course, the access testing. There has to be annual monitoring, which will be the academics of the student and the access testing. Exit criteria every year, and I'm going to cover that in a second. You must score at least a five on the access test along with other multiple measures to be able to exit from the program. Once you exit from our program, and in any program, you have to have two years of monitoring after leaving, and then parent notification takes place at every step along the way. If you look at the next page, this is going to change because we're going to indicate to you that ELL has changed. The state has designated that we start calling our learners multilingual learners instead of English language learners, but they have not updated this template yet, but I just want to make that known to you. There are six levels that we see here, and when you take the access test, you can score within any one of these six levels. When you see expanded, you'll see right beside that row, you'll see 4.5 is needed to exit ESL program. So you have to score a 4.5 on the access test to be able to exit the program along with public measures. Other measures will be academics, report card grades, how students are actually doing within the classroom, and those things will go along with the access score. On the next page, you'll see our multilingual learners and access. ELLs will be replaced by MLs as per the state beginning at the beginning of the year, I think by August 31st. We will no longer use the term ELL, which designate the learners, ESL is the program, but ELL was learners, so now it'll be ESL program and MLs will be the learners. What is access? Access has went through, and I was speaking to Dr. in the fifth of this today, has been through an iteration. Access started, it's good to know about access. WEDA is the organization, and access is the actual instrument itself. So it started out with three states, Wisconsin, Delaware, and Arkansas. They came together to form this consortium, is where WEDA was born. Arkansas dropped out. They had spent money on all of the acronyms, and so they decided that instead of blowing up the acronym, they would just call it World Class Instruction Design and Assessment, and that's how the name was changed. As a member of WEDA, we, the Consortium, New Jersey uses the ACCESS, which stands for Accessive Comprehensive and Communication in English State to State. We use the ACCESS suite of assessments as a tool to measure proficiency in the English language. There are four components in ACCESS, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Speaking and reading are counted for 35% of the access test each, for 70%, reading is 15%, and writing is 15%, which is 100%. They're the mandate to to measure MLs proficiency in English language. We use it for making decisions about whether students are ready to receive services, whether they're ready to exit, and we also, something that we're looking at that's going to be big for us this year is for how we place the students. One of the situations that we are finding in dual endorsed classrooms or classrooms will have a lot of, we have to basically group the students according to levels. So you could have four levels, one, two, three, four. Historically, we've had levels all over the place in one classroom. What has to take place now is that we're looking at grouping the kids according to and scheduling them according to levels, which makes it easy and better for us to teach them. So for example, level ones can be in a class together, level one-twos can be together, but we don't want level one, two, three, fours in one class because it's difficult for the teacher to deliver that instruction. And that has hampered us, and so we saw that that was something that we needed to do to improve the quality of our instruction. On the next page, the state also tells us we must give some type of student achievement data. In 2022-23, our highest numbers of Ls reached 603. So we were at 603 Ls in the district. Of that 603, 593 took the access testing in spring of 2023. Of the 593 that took it, 60 achieved a 4.5 or higher. Yes, sir?
Because I just saw this, the bilingual, sealed by literacy. How does that relate to this?
It doesn't.
See? Again.
Can I, can I, quickly, as you're going over this data, so you have about 10% that are exiting the program?
Of the ones that took a yes.
Right. So kids take the access testing every year, regardless of what proficiency level you're in, correct? It might be helpful to kind of get an idea of like how many kids were in each proficiency level, so then you can sort of see, because you know that, I'm sure kids have been moving, right? And how many kids like start on like a level one?
Yes.
Versus a level two.
Or three, yeah.
Right? Like you wouldn't expect a level one to be moving in a year to be like out of, of, you know, the ESL program. So it might be helpful, then you can really see the movement between each level to see sort of the growth, how all these kids are like progressing.
We actually have that, but I decided not to actually break it out because it would become too comprehensive, but we have that information.
What, okay, sorry.
And one of the things that we notice, and one of the misnomers is that people think that when you test into the program that you have to stay there for years. That's not true. So sometimes if a kid tests in and they can actually test out the same year, if they scored that on their, on their, if it's 4.5 and have multiple measures, then they're able to exit the program. They have to be monitored, that's a good sign, so we have to monitor them still for two years, but we do have the information.
Right, yeah, I just wondered how many kids were starting at like a level one. I know that where I am, we had, we have an influx of students, you know, entering the program, and a lot of, you know, a lot of students who are coming in at a level one who really don't speak any English, so I was just curious how that could like correlate.
For us, it's almost the opposite in a lot of cases. So as the pandemic is in our rearview mirror, we have, the requirements are to test these kids in person, so those two and a half years where we were spotty in person, we weren't able to get the kids in to test them, even if we were here, the parents weren't sending their kids. So not only is the learning loss there for this population, but our ability to help them test and figure out where they are to get that, to get that remediation or language mastery to get out of the program, so it was tough.
Yeah, that's another reason why our numbers kind of balloon, because you have to test out in person, which we're not able to do that. But I can tell you that the majority of our lower levels like one and two seem to correspond in our lower grades, so we find out.
Younger kids coming in.
Yes, that's where it seems to be. We find that when we test, because if you go back to that rubric, you will look at, for example, a four expanded, known to uses social English and some technical academic language. So we find that a lot of the older students have some social English that when they take this, they're able to use that to their advantage as well. But a lot of the ones that have committed to ones and twos, I am the lower grades, that's where the problem is in the form, so far, I would doubt it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Dr. Baskerville, when it comes to them, in the assessment for the four domains, the speaking, listening, reading, and writing, is this done, is the access program a way in which they can speak through and like almost like a bilingual or something like that, where they speak into the microphone and then it records their speaking, or is that?
No, we don't. It's live.
It's live, okay.
That's the reason why it had to be done in person.
Okay.
Not even Zoom, they had made us do it in person with everybody.
Yeah, I just look at the data, and I'm like, 10% doesn't seem like a large number, and because I'm familiar, I know that there's so many kids at different levels that it might just not accurately reflect how kids are progressing through each level.
A good example is like, we were 10%, but 2022, we were 14%. We had fewer students, so in 2022, 433 students took the test. 61, not 60, but 61 actually tested out, and we were at 14%.
Isn't it? Okay.
Demographic data, we have approximately 265 females, 328 males. Large group is our Spanish speakers at 44.8%, comprising our largest ML demographic, whereas the district Hispanic makeup is 24.6% of the student population. That's interesting. Our percentage of Spanish speaking Ls is in line with the state average. Even though the state did question us and call us about that, we were able to give them information about a bilingual waiver, which I'm going to get into in a minute. And one of the things that we have, that we have going on is that we have a ESL endorsed cohort at Rutgers, and what that ESL endorsed cohort is going to do is allow us eventually to not have, you're not supposed to have more than 30% of a classroom population being Ls, and so at some spots, we have to try to make sure we stay within compliance with that, and it's just not good instructional practice. So what happens is, is that by having more teachers to spread the students out, then it's better able to group them in one, two, three, four, and then we have fewer students within the classroom.
And we did that about five years ago with Rowan University, and now it just makes more sense to do it with Rutgers, and they're right here and building a nice job, creating that relationship there.
You just passed it like a couple months ago, correct?
Yeah, yep, you did, and not only passed it, but you know, agreed to fund it.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is a big deal for us because it'll really open up the capabilities of our classrooms.
That's a good way to service our students.
We have 15 teachers in the program now.
That's great.
And they started in the end of June.
That's great.
So they should be finishing up their first course now.
Nice.
The bilingual waiver requires that there are 20 or more multilingual learners in a single language tutor, grades K through 12. We are supposed to give length, instruction to that group in their native language. So you can see how that can become a problem, because if we have, for example, we have, when you look here now, we have over, anywhere over 20, where you have over 20 students, and that's district wide, so it can be per grade level, per grade span, per geographical location, and so it's difficult, if you can imagine where you have to give language to kids or instruction to kids, and that 34 kids, X amount in elementary school, X amount in intermediate school, X amount in high school, so it's nearly impossible to do that. So we, we apply for the waiver, we receive the waiver, and you can see where our numbers are regarding that. So right now, we have five languages in the district that we speak, we have over 20. You can see our largest is Arabic, which is at 34, and you see where those are, but not our largest, you see Gujarati is at 84, and Spanish at 266, and so those students would have to be in a class, and we have those numbers over, and that's where we are. And then we look at this as the ones who are approaching, so we can see the ones that have not hit 20, but are slowly itching up to that place. So, yes.
I just want to ask you a question about the waiver. What subject are you supposed to be teaching in their native language? I guess that's.
The core content subject.
So all core content subjects, not, okay, because I know you're here to learn English, right? So that would replace, like your ESL would replace your English, so over 20, you're supposed to be teaching.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your, I can see where that would be an incredible challenge.
Yes.
Nearly impossible.
Yes. And so they did change, the state has changed the way we actually present our waiver application because some of the things they've stopped asking us to do, but we still have the information just in case they come back and access for it. You can see that we do what is called sheltered instruction, K to five, and we do high intensity is six through 12. So those are the two models that we do to satisfy the bilingual waiver and to make sure we service our kids. Sheltered instruction is basically with a dual endorsed teacher that takes place within the classroom. The dual endorsed teacher has to teach students using skills and accommodations that they have learned in their ESL training. That takes place for one period, and then the rest of the period, the teacher uses a small group of them, and the rest of the period, she uses tactics and accommodations and strategies learned by using the, by being dual trained. That takes place in K through five. High intensity is six through 12. High intensity is that you must have two periods a day of ESL instruction by a traditional ESL teacher.
Dr. Baskerville, if anybody else can help, help me on this. You presented on an assessment that the state made us do, and, and, yeah, and it was, the science scores were lower in particular area, but you had stated that, as to your point of that some of it was related to English as a second language, so does this help those students who are taking science?
It helps across the board.
Across the board?
Yes, because we have to give, and that's a good question, because a dual endorsed teacher.
Okay.
Is assuming that that teacher all day, essentially.
Okay.
So that teacher is also using in other content area, the skills and the strategies that they were training through something that's called the SIe program, so sheltered instruction, observation protocols, by you doing that, you learn techniques to use in those classes, those children.
This is the program with Rutgers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's professors from Rutgers coming in?
No, it's a, we have like a hybrid program with them. Even though we just kind of showers when we're hybrid, because what they wanted to with instructors because language acquisition or any type of language training is always best done. There is some type of interaction between students themselves and the instructor.
Yeah.
So what we're doing is that the instructors is online.
Oh, okay.
But also there are times when instructors will come into our campus to actually meet the fifteen teachers that have been.
And the Rutgers professors don't have interaction with our kids. They're just teaching our teachers.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Don't worry, you have teachers. And any questions about?
You answer them all?
See.
Thank you, sir.
Um, GPA. New Jersey Graduate Proficiency Assessment, which is now a requirement, um, on May third, State Board of Education approved the cut scores. If you remember the cut scores, when the GPA used to be amazing, the cut scores used to be seven fifty, fifty for math and for ELA. But the state reduced the cut score for both, put it down to seven twenty-five. Um, and so this is the new, so they took the cut score, took the cut scores down to seven twenty-five and gave, of course, a menu of, of a pathway so a person can take as well. The ELA component is aligned to grade ten standards and the mathematics component is aligned to algebra one and geometry standards. Next page three, achievement or pass and score. The first pass is to be passed in the GPA. And achieving up, which is a seven twenty-five and seven twenty-five. And if you've done that, then you're fine. But if you did not score satisfactorily on the end of the GPA, uh, students may retake it. And I have the retake dates for the fall at the bottom of the page. Uh, and that is, the cut score is there. So you can see that there is a cut score. The fall administration is, will be on the sixteenth and the twentieth for students who want to retake it, uh, if they did not meet the cut score. The second pathway is you can see pathways for ELA and pathways for math. What we are doing is that we are focusing on the Accuplacer, Write-up Place, Placer. And then for, uh, ELA, then we're focusing on the Accuplacer, the next generation QAS for math. So we are focusing on those two things. You may remember the ASVAB, they pulled the ASVAB off, so it's no longer an option. Uh, two days ago, they pulled the, uh, we had the, and I didn't, I had to go ahead and pull that out of this presentation, but they had something called the elementary algebra, uh, Accuplacer, elementary algebra. The state two days ago said that that would not be an option. So we had to pull that off as well. So currently, these are the options that the state are going with for this coming, for this school year. Uh, the Accuplacer, Write-up Placer has a score from one to eight is the range. So they're looking at a score of, of five or more. If you score five or more, then that will entitle the student to go directly to college level ELA, college level English. Um, the Accuplacer math, next generation, QAS, qualitative reasoning, algorithms, statistics. Uh, scores from two hundred to three hundred. Mid-score is two fifty as an average. That score, uh, is considered acceptable by most colleges and universities, two fifty out of all. English Accuplacer will take place August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And the math Accuplacer will take place August seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-eighth. So those are coming up. The third pathway is a portfolio appeal in grade twelve. Uh, that's something that we basically shy away from, um, because we think that our first line of attack with this will be the Accuplacer and then we will reconsider whether we have to go after we look at the numbers with the Accuplacer. Uh, but these are the two menus where we can go, uh, if a person did not pass the GPA administration.
Dr. Baswell, so when this happened a year ago, because I pulled out my folder on this and there was a concern that, uh, with the cutoff scores being lowered, does that mean, does that give the perception that, uh, that the state is lowering the standards for students overall?
Well, that was, I think, in the Journal Assembly and another, in the Journal Assembly, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and I know a couple of people who were involved in that. And I think, um, well, without calling names, there were several people on the Journal Assembly who said just that, that they thought that we were lowering the expectation. And then there were other people who were saying that our expectations were overinflated. And so eventually it was low. Uh, the good thing is that it had nothing to do with us. So, you know, we are not saying one way or the other, whatever they send down, that's what we have to abide by. So we cannot say, it has not changed our rigor. It has not changed our approach. So we continue to do that. And then when I get further into this presentation, you're going to see how I think that we're going to even fare even better, uh, with this as, as well.
So then, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, but across the state, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we lowered that. By going from seven fifty to seven twenty-five, does that mean it's easier to pass this test?
Absolutely.
That's a fact, reality.
It is. And they, they also, they also lowered the Accuplacer score to pass. It used to be six.
I feel like that's a good thing too.
Well, and, and, and that's exactly the point. Even nine people that are sitting here, opinions might differ on whether that's good or bad, right? You know, Jersey is, is typically the, the third highest state in the, in the country for education. You know, do we lower those standards with something like this? I, I'm not a, a high stakes test guy. I'm not. I mean, if I told you what I got on my SATs, I'd be embarrassed. I'm like, I don't know if I had to hit nine hundred, right? But I'm doing okay now, right? So I'm just not, everybody's path to success is very different, but it depends who you speak to, whether that is, uh, uh, whether that means that we're lowering our standards or not. You know, on the heels of the pandemic, and I, I know it's in our rearview mirror, but we're still catching up to where, so is the entire country. Um, I, I would challenge anybody to, to tell me that the kids who didn't have to take a high stakes test the past three years to graduate are going to do any better or worse than the kids who did.
The reason I'm asking is because was it done because of trying to increase graduation rates? In other words, it's so, it's so important to have a higher rate?
Probably, probably, I would think COVID is probably their big rationale. I mean, you're during high state, high state testing, which many think is arbitrary anyway, like a number you sort of just come up with. And, you know, you have kids who they know have learning loss and you're holding them to the same level that you expected before the pandemic. So, I mean, it seems like you, they're already at a disadvantage because of what they went through. And then to hold them to the same standard from pre-pandemic numbers is like probably a bit illogical. So if I had to guess, and I'm not in the legislature, but that's probably the rationale.
The thing with the GPA is that it hasn't been around a very long time anyway. But the thing about that is that when the state start looking at how statewide people are performing on state assessments that's based upon state standards and the whole state for some reason is not coming in where it's supposed to come in, then there's a reevaluation of that. One of the things that I read that they did was that they did not necessarily lessen the rigor of the questions as much as they changed the weights of what certain questions were being worked. So by weighting some questions more than others, it changed the probability of the, uh, ability to score a different score as opposed to having overweighted questions in certain places.
And, and part of the frustration, uh, with things like this is exactly what Bill said. Two days ago, they changed one of these requirements, right? Uh, you know, they'll tell us that the GPA doesn't count, that it does count, that it doesn't, that it does. Uh, so it, it changes a lot, which lessens the validity for some people because, well, which is it? Is it meaningful or it doesn't, doesn't? So, uh, it's, it's a, an interesting concept and it can be debated for hours.
Yeah, colleges also like have laxed on like requiring test scores. Like a lot of colleges say you don't even need to send in your SAT scores. So it's changing that sort of.
I just had a quick question. The, the Accuplacer test, which I see you have dates on the bottom, those are for students who are going to be seniors this year.
Correct.
Who are not meeting.
Who didn't meet yet.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying. So these are the, these, this is the pathway for seniors to make sure. And you know, like when those test scores, so they're taken in the end of August, which is like right around the corner.
The turnaround time is relatively quick.
So then they'll know if this is, and let's say you don't, I don't know, let's say you don't meet your, um, placement, right? You don't have the five or above. Do you get to take a different?
Yes.
One of these and then you have time to take that other one in order to?
Yes.
Meet your requirements?
Yes. And that's one of the things that the council department at the high school is working on that.
Sure.
Uh, so there's a plan that's in place and I have some of that plan here. And, and what's next, so the plan right now is that we already have some numbers that we're already good with. And I'll show you those in a minute, but then after we do this, then we'll see where we go.
Thank you.
Okay, page five, here are the results. And you see on page five, uh, well, let's just look at it from a student's standpoint. We see passing to ELA, eighty-one percent of our students are considered to be graduation ready according to the GPA, uh, for ELA. And so you can see that's right on par with what the state did as well. That's just this instrument. And you can see that, uh, we have in mathematics, we have fifty-nine percent in mathematics that are considered to be graduation ready and fifty-five percent in the state. So right there, that's a state trend. At least we are like four points in front of where the state is right there. So I just want to bring that to your attention where we are. But if you were to flip the page, and let's use the next two pages in conjunction with one. So you see the graduation rate, uh, rated by state test, fifty-nine percent for math, eighty-one percent for ELA. Four hundred and ninety-seven students in math took it, two hundred and ninety-three students passed it uh, for math and three hundred and ninety-one students passed it for ELA. There were students who also have already taken a second pathway. So if we factor in the students who have taken a second pathway, we'll see that in math, eighty-four students passed the second pathway, which takes the total of the Scotty High School students who are graduation ready from fifty-nine percent to seventy-six percent. That's as of today.
And this doesn't take into account any of those tests that are available the end of August?
No, not so. That's up right now.
That's good news.
Exactly. So we're, we're right there. Uh, and then if we look at the ELA, uh, we have twenty-nine students who add to that eighty-one percent, but it brings that total to eighty-seven percent of students who are graduation ready. So we are positioned in a pretty decent place. You see where we go from here. But the numbers, when you factor in, if you just look at the GPA numbers alone, it does not tell the full picture because if we add the other pathways into it, then we have seventy-six or eighty-seven percent. Demographic data. Page eight. One thing that we find interesting here is the percentage. Uh, for example, we noticed that, that this seems to be a pretty decent correlation between the percentage of the students who took the test in grade eleven and the actual percentage of that, of the demographic in the district that were going to go to school. I have it on my sheet. You don't, uh, have this. But for example, the Asian population in the scatter is thirty-four point five percent district wide. We see that tested in the Asian population in grade, you got my seventy-two percent. So it seems to be a pretty decent sampling of where the district is. Black, twenty-four percent, tested twenty-eight percent. Hispanic, twenty-two point six, tested twenty-three percent. Multiple race, five point six, tested four. So we see that there. Also, I'm going out in the right hand corner, the passing rate. We have begun to really close the gap in disproportionality within the suburbs. There used to be sometimes thirty points, thirty-five points, uh, in between. So now we see ninety-one percent, seventy-one, seventy-four, ninety-four percent. We see the gap being closed there in the math proficiency, just on this test. Concern, uh, in ELA, you see the thirty-eight percent and the forty-one percent. We have begun to drill down into who those students are. And those are the students that we are looking at to put in title programs and to do our remediation programs. So we're targeting those students. Exactly, we know who they are. So we're trying to make sure that our programs are targeted, the site programs based upon student need and just going down into those students. And the same thing we see here by gender. I was speaking to some of the supervisors today and there has been. Normally, we find that in ELA, over the years, females have outperformed males. It was so slight in ELA, that seems to continue to be a trend. So you see eighty-seven percent and seventy-seven percent. But males have outperformed females sometimes in math. We don't see that as a trend now. Certainly see that they are doing, uh, yeah, even though it's like statistically very close, only three percentage points apart, you know? That's something that they go with at that level. Um, slide ten, you see just a visual for you of distribution by achievement level and all subjects. That's math and ELA together. You'll see the females that's seventy-three percent passing. Males are sixty-seven percent passing. So I think then we're all, with, with this test and then those two, that's where we are. Uh, on page eleven, I just want to bring your attention to the ELL population. We have really, well, now we do is correct the ML population to thirty-first. We really tried to target them and you can see how we have fifty-six percent of the Ls passed at the high school. So we find it to be very interesting as well. If you can look down at the free and reduced lunch, uh, we had ninety-two students, we consider them to be at risk, doing forty-seven percent when you look at program. So that's where we look at these type of notes to identify the students to put into our remediation tutorial programs and our extra health program. Page twelve, we can see distribution.
So you're actually, are using this data to do what you're.
Yes.
But the thing is, there's a, you said there's a delay in the, in other words.
No, this.
That, this would have.
So this is, right, so this is the, the graduation data for the, for the eleventh graders this year going into twelve, right?
Right.
So then, you know, how to target your kids.
Yes, right.
In order to, you know, give them the remedial services and the extra services in order to help build up some of those deficit areas, especially the math.
Yes.
Which we know statewide is an issue, but definitely has to be an area of focus where we have to, you know, find ways to fill in those gaps.
And with our funds, we have to identify our funds with those students in there. So it's very easy for us to drill right down, we can find exactly who those students are.
I know we're talking about the graduation proficiency, but I'm, I'm assuming and, you know, knowing you that we're going to look at the data with the state testing across the board and then target those kids every grade level.
Yes.
Who are, you know, who you need to give those supplementary services in order to start filling that gap, especially at a younger age.
Yes.
So that we can build.
We don't have, as of today, we have not received an ESL.
Of course, it's from the state.
Yeah. So we're still waiting for that. Uh, and so, but hopefully we will get that shortly.
And then we can use that to direct instruction.
As well. But until we get there, we'll use our end of year district assessment. Page twelve, you can see, uh, what I really want to say is, um, part of how we are beginning to climb out of, uh, low, high teens and low twenties, uh, that's a thing of the past with the Scotty. And it's been for quite some time and I, those of us who've been around a while can see the growth there. Uh, you can look at the free and reduced lunch, there've been times where there was down in the high teens and twenties. Now over forty-seven percent, uh, by program. Uh, section five oh fours is up to sixty-nine percent. Look at the Ls, the MLs, forty-six percent. Look how far they've come. Uh, the spare numbers can be a bit misleading because most of them will take the DLM, those that are, that are qualified for that. And look at the general ed population, it's still up to seventy-seven. And that's off just this one assessment. And one assessment does not tell everything. So I want to make two remarks on that.
So those, those students in special ed have to take the same test?
It all depends on, uh, whether they can test. They can either take the DLM or they can take the access. If they do not qualify for the DLM, they have to take.
And I'm sure it's, I would guess it's probably a, a very strict, where most kids are taking this. And probably a small percentage.
A small percentage.
That's taking, so when you're looking at your special ed numbers, you're talking about multiple different types of classifications.
Right. Um, and whether, whether or not it's in their IEP, a must take or a must pass. So a lot is a must take.
So that, that, that data could be a little mis, you know.
Absolutely. If you take it out of context. Yes. And our plan, you never present that out without a plan. So our plan is, uh, all students registered to a school agenda course where all pathway assessment information will be located. That will be in our school agenda sessions to administer the Accuplacer will be L. Uh, and then it just goes Accuplacer's assessment by the college board. Uh, so it just gives us information, students can take multiple times. So that's a good thing about that too. But all that information is there. Um, and on the last page, you see the schedule coming up, uh, at the high school. Uh, the schedule coming up, the, the Accuplacer will take place seventeen, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of this month. So we're trying to hit that early as we can. And then there will be an October year level date. And there will be times in October and November, students will be able to take them from the.
I could make a recommendation. Um, you know, eleventh grade students don't always, or now twelfth grade students don't always communicate to their, uh, families. So maybe sending an email, just letting them know there's resources and there's school agenda.
So I'll, I'll, um, I was going to say, and two, two things. One is Mr. Baldassano held a informational session last night for all of the parents of the kids. for all of the parents of the kids who did not.
That's great.
On Zoom, forty parents were there, which is a great number on August ninth. I'll be honest with you, he'll put that presentation online and continue to chip away. Counselors will actually be calling parents.
I think that's great.
Instead of going through the kids.
I think that's great.
The second thing I was going to say is, I say this every time we have a, a presentation about, uh, testing data. Um, our kids aren't data points, right? They're human beings who have, you know, things going on in their lives and things like that. The, the most thing we could use this information for is exactly what you said, Ms. Cordino, is to identify areas where we could help give them skills to be successful. Right? So I, I, uh, I, well, I find this useful. I don't find it as useful as the state does for the reasons they do. Right? Because our kids are kids and they're not data points, so.
You have a plan, that's good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Bay.
Nice job.
It's a lot of information.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Rennelli. Um, personnel and labor relations, Ms. Smith.
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through F be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Secretary, can you please take the roll?
Ms. Cordino.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Scottow.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Connors.
Yes.
Ms. Cherry.
Abstained from being yes to the rest.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I see no one for, the floor for public comments, so we will bypass that. Uh, committee reports, we have two committee reports. The first one is going to be policy and legislative.
President Cherry? Uh, just a, a motion to, to close the public comment, just as a formal, I guess.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to close public comments?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lane, or it's approved.
Policy and legislative committee met on August the second, twenty twenty-three to discuss proposed policies regarding weapons, uh, threat assault items and transgender students and more. The committee unanimously approved adding the language, adding language to policy eighty-four sixty-seven about weapons prohibiting law enforcement officers from other jurisdictions from carrying weapons on school grounds or at school-sponsored events they are attending as parents or community members. This amendment was based on guidance from the Piscataway Township Police Department. The revised policy will be placed on the board agenda. The commit, the committee unanimously approved proposed policy twenty-four nineteen regarding school threat assessment teams for placement on the board agenda. The policy would implement state law requiring multidisciplinary disciplinary teams in each school to identify students who may pose a threat of violence and to provide resources to support them and maintain a safe school environment. Ms. Cordino sought assurances that these teams would apply appropriate criteria to identify students who do in fact pose a risk. Ms. Smith also encouraged the administration to monitor the activities of these teams to assure that students are not being singled out unfairly. The committee unanimously approved an update to policy fifty-seven forty-six, uh, transgender students to be placed on the board agenda. It would align with State Department of Education guidance on district's duty of accommodation for transgender students. Mr. Rubin briefed the committee on a recent amendment to the sick leave statute, drastically expanding the list of reasons eligible for use of sick days aside from illness. The committee shared questions and concerns about the potential effect on absenteeism and future labor negotiations and urged the administration to collect data on sick day usage. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Rennelli has.
I just have one, I just have one comment, um, going back to the school threat assessment teams. We have members of the Rowway Board of Education here. And as we work to comply with the law, we really appreciate working collaboratively with them, uh, to, you know, just make sure we take care of kids, number one, and take care of ourselves, number two, with all the comply, compliance with the law. So we appreciate the, uh, the help and the work. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um, next curriculum committee, the curriculum committee met on August the seventh, twenty twenty-three to discuss curriculum updates and adopt new textbooks. Curriculum design approval, math one through six, Rebecca Dayton. K-five update, Go Math integrations, building blocks prior knowledge. Math seven through twelve, Frank Rubeliski. Accelerated math seven, adjustments for decimals, assessments and vertical articulations. Algebra one, using decimals for consistency and alignment to state test questions. AP pre-calculus, this is a new course, increasing accessibility for students. Resources are the same. Algebra two, aligned with the geometry text. In addition to all courses, writing new district assessments as well. Topics in pre-calculus, updating the four-year elective course to be aligned more closely with the traditional pre-calculus class. College algebra, dual credit course with Middlesex County College. Discrete mathematics, elective course update, management science, growth and systematic, statistics and probability mathematics of social course. Choice, visual and performing arts, Rebecca Serakli, AP art history new course, middle school virtual visual art, new edition of eighth grade accelerated art. MS general music, MS chorus, chorus music, MS instrumental music. Introduction to animation, animation two, ceramics three, the pottery wheel, multimedia printing and design, all general streamlining tech and resource updates. Science K through eight, Dr. Baskerville. Final year with three-year implementation, implementation of integrated curricular design in eighth grade science. Science nine through twelve, Jessica Purchase. Now I said that wrong.
Pritchard.
Pritchard, AP physics one, algebra, based and correspondence to one semester of college and level physics. Freshman seminar, Noel April, reflecting on the teacher and student feedback, increasing diversity and engagement in updating service projects. World language art and ESL, Glenysia Gerard Moron, ELS are now multi-language letter learners. Level four of American Sign Language, continuing course sequence. Middle schools compliance with the state standards. Social studies nine through twelve, James Knox. AP African-American Studies, the district received a grant to offer the course in the last pilot year and receive training for the teachers. World cultures honors international law, focusing on law, government, global psychology, philosophy of law and with model UN simulations at the end of the year. Honors US History two, law and mark trials. US History one, update, updated with new standards to be more rigorous. Language arts, Janine Albanese and Scott Hood. Grades four through eight will have vocabulary workshop, a formal vocabulary curriculum with pacing guides. Writing essential grades one through eight, grammar and composition. These are resp, these are responses to data-driven deficits that were observed. High school English one and four revisions, consistency and horizontal alignment. Creating common vocabulary list at the high school level. Contemporary poetry and performance. A new course comes from Piscataway High School Poetry Club and Poetry Out Loud competitions based on student interest. Career and technical education, Ms. Robin Kay. Print and production two and three updates aligned to NJ Tech and Ed standards integrated across multiple career clusters. New software and equipment is now reflected. Health and Ed Physical Education, Dr. Baskerville. K through A PE reviewed and update resources and pacing were appropriate. Textbook adoption. Gartner's Art Duty Ages Sixteenth Edition. Cleaner and His Textbooks will be used in new Piscataway High School AP art history course. This text is recommended by the college board and is aligned with the course content and AP exam requirements. Vocabulary workshop, Solidar. This is a consumable resource for students to support their vocabulary development and it will be the primary resource. Um, we had one incredible meeting on Monday night. The advancement that Piscataway has given to the students and continue to give to the students is remarkable. The adjustments that are being made in vocabulary to further, uh, expand their vocabulary on all levels and sco, including students with special education, which modifications will be put into place for them. Um, we had a great meeting. I want to thank Nancy Cordino and Dr. Connors for being a part of it on Monday night. Um, Nancy, being a teacher, is able to give feedback that the standard person cannot give, but because she's hands-on doing both sides of a dual role, I take my hat off to you and thank you for all that you bring to the table.
Thank you, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
And I just wanted to add on the science nine through twelve. Um, adding AP physics that's algebra-based opens it up to a lot more students because normally physics is taught in a calculus-based, in the AP physics. And so that's, that's a good, um, addition.
It is. In addition, Dr. Connors is still going to be donating all of his books from Colgate and all of his.
I just remember Y is equal MX plus B, okay?
That slope.
Of the integral from zero to infinity.
No, in all seriousness, it was an incredible meeting and looking forward to the school year starting back with all the new plans and all the new hires we have based on what we just saw up in personnel. Hats off to Colleen and Dr. Baskerville for all you're doing with the new hiring. Um, so we're, we're ready. We are definitely ready. Um, that's the end of all, my committee report. Uh, now we're going on to the approval of minutes by Ms. Lane. Yes, Ms. Nancy?
I just wanted to ask, doctor, I meant to ask at the meeting and then it was just very indep. This discrete mathematics, is that replacing the old statistics and probability class? It's just a different class? That was my question. I, I was, I meant to ask and then, you know, it was in and out it went.
Ms. Lane?
Yes, good evening. Approval of minutes, be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted. Business meeting, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the business meeting, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, executive session as well, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fiscal planning and operations, Dr. Connors.
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through O be approved as presented.
Second. Can you take the roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Just quickly, there was, um.
Who, who made the second?
I did.
Uh, it was stated in the communications from the superintendent's office that we didn't get any questions, but, um, item five was community education department. And so that, um, we had to go out, out for contracts. And so David Olivera had called me before he left for vacation. He discussed it with me and then he discussed it with Superintendent Rennelli. And I guess no one had any questions, but then now it's on.
Right, so you'll be voting on two things. J in that area is giving, is, the board's giving the district permission to open up for competitive contracting.
Right.
Which gives you permission for awarding in K the competitive contract that you opened up.
Okay.
For the, um, services that we receive in community ed. So, uh, three out of those four listed were, were recommended.
Okay.
Okay, can you take the roll call?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Scottow?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cordino?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Smith?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A and B be approved as presented.
Second. Can you take the roll, Mr. Secretary?
Well, I just want to say one thing that I, I, I want to give kudos to, um, to Dr. Rennelli and his team and David Rubin and then the policy committee for, um, hearing a concern that I, that I had had based on some observations and it resulting in very robust discussions on the, uh, the weapons policy. And, um, came up with this language and I'm, it was a good discussion and thank you.
Okay, to roll, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Scottow?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, Mr. King?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through H be approved as presented.
Second. Can you take the roll, Mr. Secretary?
Uh, Ms. Scottow?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Equal Services, Ms. Cordino? Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through D be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Scottow?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Administrative and auxiliary, Ms. Scottow?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through F be approved as presented.
Second.
And Madam President?
Yes.
For to call the role, I wanted to, uh, just to call out and thank the Grand U PTO for their donation of seventeen thousand dollars to support the students. It's amazing. That is fantastic.
P two, PTO works harder than that.
It sure does.
Sure do.
We have for many, many years.
You're very lucky. We are lucky.
And that will directly result, uh, in, in supporting the kids. Six thousand dollars will go for field trips and eleven thousand will go for assemblies, uh, field day, things like that for, uh, Mr. Decide to be able to use, so. It's great work here, exactly right where I pointed out. Yep.
Uh, Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Scottow?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Old business, does anyone have any old business?
Madam President, I have, uh, three things. The first, um, is a reminder to, for everyone on the, uh, board members to please do the New Jersey School Boards Association Board self-evaluation. I sent out a reminder email, um, that, to go on, and a link. So you go online and do the evaluations, it takes you about thirty minutes or so. And that to be done by August fifteenth. So that once, um, our field representative has everybody's, um, evaluations, then we can, um, schedule time to, with her to come here and facilitate and discuss and review our own, um, evalu, evaluation of ourselves. Second thing is that I'll, uh, be contacting members about the next New Jersey School Boards Board Certification Training. Uh, the board certification, um, training is, uh, sixteen credits and each credit's an hour. So we're doing pretty good. We're sixth down, so we're six credits out of, out of sixteen. And the topics that we'll be covering will be, uh, student achievement and the board's role in, in curriculum. And once, um, you know, we get into September, we don't have to rush. We'll pick a date, you know, um, because we have, actually, you actually have four years to do it. So, but we've, we've been doing pretty good so far in the last first six months. And then the last thing is that in your board packet, um, I'm always been a, a big fan of our athletic department. And so to remind board members about the fall, fall sports schedule that was, that you did receive, uh, paper copy, but it's also available as a link online as it gets updated. And for those people that don't have it, um, you know, it's an incentive that you can, board members can go to free for all the grade and middle six county games because you should have an administrative like, like a pass, yeah, I think you got one there, and to get in, so.
You all have a special one. I'll get, I'll get the award members, uh, there's.
What? No, anyway, so, uh, please go to, uh, fall sports, not just football. Try and get to as many as, as you can. And Madam President, that's old business for me.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Anyone with new business?
Just as you mentioned that, I know the Super Chief Festival is on this year, correct?
Oh, is it?
Right? So just, I don't know the date offhand, I'm sure you do, right, for sure, to know the date now. I, 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 I mean, so just knowing that it, it didn't happen last year, that it is happening. So, you know, come out and support that as well.
Yeah, and in the past, though, the, the, the board members, they would invite to, um, lead the band, escort the bands out onto the field. So if you have time, you know, just to show off, yeah, yeah. It's a nice touch, you know.
Yeah, it was very nice. It was fun. Just a shout out. They didn't have it last year in, in April. Yeah. But no, they're definitely having it this year.
Happy for having it.
Yeah.
It's good. All right, we're looking out for it.
Okay, and the grand finale of the night is, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.